Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 4th, 2014, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have five public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is an annexation petition for approximately 156.6 acres along Veterans Parkway. Mrs. Kathy Wright, executor of the Des Harman Hartman Estate, is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider the annexation of property that is located along Veterans Parkway, and the property includes right-of-way for a total of 156.6 acres. The subject property is identified in orange on the map that you have before you, and the right-of-way that's being included in the annexation study is approximately 2,070 linear feet, and it's identified in the blue color, and together they equal 156.6 acres. It's the same tract of land and right-of-way for which a petition for annexation was submitted last year, however, it was withdrawn before the planning commission took any action on the matter. The property, as it's situated, is contiguous with current city limits along its northern, eastern, and southern property lines. It's also located within the urban growth boundary. The owners of the property have submitted a petition for the city to annex the property, and it's not necessary for the city to annex any additional parcels with the annexation of this property. They've requested annexation so that the property can benefit from city-provided services, and the owners, the Des Hartman Estate, are looking to sell the property, and the subject of zoning will be the next public hearing. This public hearing is for you to consider the annexation and the adoption of the plan of services which you have before you. The city will be able to provide services, and the timeline for that has been established in the plan of services, and this should be a relatively easy annexation to effect. Again, you should hold a public hearing regarding the annexation request, and the zoning change request will be the subject of the next public hearing.
Okay. Do we have a presentation? No presentation on this one? Okay.
There is a representative in the audience if you have questions, but no presentation.
Before I open the public hearing, in case you've never attended one of our public hearings in these council chambers before, I'll briefly go over our rules. We'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward to the podium that would like to speak either for or against this proposal. Please make all your comments and/or questions to the planning commission. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions and try to answer them at the conclusion of the public hearing. We will be observing a three-minute time limit tonight, so please keep your comments brief, and no more than three minutes in length, because we have quite a few people here that might like to speak. All that being said, when you come forward, by the way, be sure to give your name and address, so we'll have that on record. The first public hearing is the annexation request for this property, so if you would, try to keep all your comments pertaining to the annexation request at hand, then we'll go to the zoning request next, right after that. That being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Anybody at all?
My name is Virgil Barnes. I live at 5427 Cloister Drive, so I live in a subdivision that is adjoining the proposed annexation area. I know I only have three minutes, but I would like to go back to about a year ago when the property was annexed on the other side of my subdivision. We were sold on the idea that turning that residential area, first part of 96 at Veteran into commercial, and the next section to our subdivision apartments, was this perfect transition to our subdivision. Now I assume we're being led to believe that the next logical step is for us to be sandwiched in between commercial, apartment, and then we're not going to touch on zoning now, but eventually heavy industrial. Is that, I think that's what I'm led to believe now, so going back to the first property, I thought that you guys annexed that illegally. I also talked to a local judge who concurred. What you guys are doing are you're creating an island, a county, within the city. You have to annex continuous land, and the way you guys are skirting around this is you're having these buffer zones that allow the city to touch this circle, this donut of county, a little narrow buffer. Obviously, the problem with that is unconstitutional, because that island, that enclave, needs essential services, and ambulances and fire engines are not going to go down a 20-yard buffer zone in my backyard. I did not file Declatory Judgment Act on this first for three main reasons. One, I built a good relationship with the city and met in the offices and saw your vision. Second, I had to look about, well, what am I going to win? Apartments would still go up under county zoning as opposed to city. Third main reason was, the ace in the hole was, there was a restrictive covenant on that deed, that said it had to be residential, so I just kind of sat back and let you guys run away with that. But why I'm concerned about this project is it will trigger a changed condition in the neighborhood that would allow that deed to be overturned, and change from residential to commercial. So I'm in a tough spot where I'm either going to fight or flee. I'm either going to pack up and move, or file a Declatory Judgment Act and couple that, not only the illegal annexation, but also the development itself, including air quality with the diesel engines, and a lot of other things that I'm not going to talk about now. So thanks again for your time, and I look forward to testing this out in the court system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nobody like to come forward? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Aidalot or Mr. Ives, do you have any comments pertaining to the questions that were brought up?
Well, with regards to the annexation, this property is contiguous with the city lines on three sides. It does not rely upon an appendage of the city to get to this property. It is basically expanding in a proper way. This is basically a textbook way of annexation, the way it should be done. I see the other annexation is not before us tonight. This one is, and this one looks like it's in good order.
Any questions from members of the planning commission? Now we're ready for a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Item B is a zoning application for approximately 149 acres along Veterans Parkway to be zoned PCD simultaneous with annexation. Mr. Chris Jones, on behalf of Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation, is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. The next public hearing is for you to consider the zoning change of a property to PCD planned commercial district simultaneous with its annexation. You can see that the property which is before you is identified in the orange color on the map on the screen, and is 149 acres, located east of Veterans Parkway and west of overall Creek. You can see that it's located north of the Cloister subdivision and south of Berkshire. This property is, of course, the same property that you just considered for annexation in the previous public hearing. The purchaser of the property has made the application to be zoned PCD planned commercial district in order to develop the tract as a corporate campus for the Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation, and for short we call that MTEMC, as described in the program book which you should have on your iPads, and also have had a copy courier to you, which outlines the PCD parameters for this property, and that, of course, planned commercial district. The proposed plan will be a long-term plan to be implemented in phases over the course of many years, and will include a variety of functions as described in that program book. The area that's located within the Blackman Land use study is identified as being public or semi-public area. At the time the Blackman Land use study was developed, it was contemplated that this area could be used as a school or other large campus use. The proposed plan doesn't appear to be inconsistent with the Blackman Community Land Use Plan in that MTEMC, in many respects, is an institutional-type use, and the proposed plan includes a variety of significant areas of open space. You also have been provided a copy of the Blackman Land Use Plan, and you can see that area number 10 is this area which I just described to you. The applicants have also met with representatives of the Homeowners Association for the Berkshire subdivision which is located to the north. I know Mr. Aidalot's personally visited with them, and I wasn't a part of the neighborhood meetings, but they've been having some conversations regarding what can be done between the Berkshire subdivision and this property. There were some changes that I expected to be coming, and those I will allow the representatives to go through regarding the buffer for that subdivision. The planning commission will, of course, need to conduct a public hearing after you do hear from the representatives regarding the zoning change request to zone this property PCD simultaneous with its annexation. I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Clyde Roundtree and his associates to the lectern to go through their PowerPoint presentation, and if you have any questions from staff, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Good evening. I'm not Clyde. I'm actually Chris Jones from Middle Tennessee Electric, and it's good to be before you tonight, very pleased and honored. I have a presentation to make to you, and Clyde and from Hudson Steel and Lyle Lynch will also come up in just a moment. Is this presentation visible?
Yep. Look, we got it.
Okay. Okay. Again, my pleasure to be before you tonight, and what this is, is a proposal to secure the long-term presence of Middle Tennessee Electric in Rutherford County, and in particular in Murfreesboro. We've been here for about 77 years, and we feel like we've been a good corporate citizen, and we're looking forward to the future. And this proposal is about vision, and it's about the future. It's about the next 50, the next 75 years. I'm pleased to have with me today members of our member-elected Board of Directors that are here, and some of my cohorts and my staff that are on the back row back here, and appreciate them being here with me tonight, and we're all excited to bring this to you. Let me tell you, if I could, just to get started, just to set the table a bit about who Middle Tennessee Electric is. I know most of you know, but Middle Tennessee Electric is an electric cooperative. We're not-for-profit, owned by the members that we serve. We're one of the largest electric cooperatives in the nation. We serve about 200,000 members, about 500,000 in terms of total population. That makes us, in terms of membership, about the sixth-largest electric cooperative in the nation. In terms of sales, we're actually the largest electric cooperative in the United States. We serve Williamson, Rutherford, Wilson, and Cannon Counties, essentially except for the city of Murfreesboro. And as all of you are very well familiar because of the area that we serve, we have grown very fast, and we continue to grow, particularly over the last 20 years, but as we look forward to the next 20 and 50 years, we project quite a bit of growth. And as we prepare for that, we have to think about facilities, and this is a big part of the reason we're before you tonight. We're looking at, again, a long-term plan for our presence in Middle Tennessee Electric, as Middle Tennessee Electric, to serve Rutherford County, and also to make it a long-term home for our headquarters. And so, right now in Rutherford County, we have two facilities, in terms of Murfreesboro, we have two facilities. We have a service center in Smyrna, but in Murfreesboro, we have two facilities. We have what we call our corporate office, which is at Salem Highway, and then we have a district, or what we call a customer service or operations center at St. Andrews. And what our vision is, is to ultimately consolidate those facilities. So to touch on what we're looking at, I've listed just a few things here that we're seeking to achieve from an objective perspective. We're looking to locate our long-term headquarters central to our service area that I mentioned a while ago. So when you look at our service territory that I described previously, our footprint, pretty much the crosshairs middle of our service territory, particularly when you consider, take into consideration, population densities that we serve, is that Veterans 840 corridor. So that's where we searched, that's where we looked first. In addition to being central to help us serve our members in a better way, easy access to I-24, especially the 840, which is the central corridor of transportation for our service territory, from the eastern part of it to the western part of it. Gives us good access to 24, to 40, to 65, and other major thoroughfares. So from a logistical standpoint, that made all the sense, so when we looked, that's where we looked, and we were fortunate enough to find this property that absolutely suits our needs, and is before you tonight for the zoning request, which we asked for your approval on. It also, again, provides us the ability to consolidate our operations, and again, we're looking to consolidate that corporate office that we have now with our district operations and customer service center into one facility. Will make us more efficient, again, the easy access helps us to deliver our mission, which a big part of that is about reliability, to deliver that in a better way for our membership. So this property suits our needs, we think, for many, many decades to come. So the size of the property is such that it can be our long-term home. So that's the essence of what we're talking about tonight. So allow us to go into some particulars, and Clyde Roundtree from Hudson Steel, again, he'll come up and touch on how we're developing the property in terms of design. Lyle Lynch from Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects will touch on the architectural flavor of the buildings we're seeking to construct. And then if I could, I want to come up at the end and talk about something very important to Middle Tennessee Electric, and that's community engagement, and how we've been working with who we hope to be our neighbors, seeking their input and attempting to address their concerns. But we'll start with Mr. Roundtree.
Chairman, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree. I'm planner with Hudson Steel Engineering, and it's my privilege to be a part of this project. It's not every day you have a chance to have a project that really has a 100-year vision associated with it, and working with the Middle Tennessee Electric team has been a real privilege as well, and working with the city and trying to come to a conclusion on what is the best way to serve the company and serve the city. And I feel like we came up with a conclusion that's really responsive to the corporate needs of Middle Tennessee Electric, but also sensitive to the surrounding community and the city as well. Most of you are familiar, as planning commissioners, with the site and with the master plan, but we'd like to just walk through that for the purpose of the public. This is the site in its full development. There are basically two major components, and the large, wide area, that's our field service component that has the maintenance facility, operations facility, it has some storage capacity, and has the pole yard area in it. That's that large, wide area. That's three buildings, in essence, that basically suffice for all the field service needs. The other two buildings are what we call, it's really the corporate office building as well as the operations center. Those are the two buildings towards the front of the property. So the main program for the site, it's a 15-acre site, three buildings are committed to field service, two buildings are committed to business and operations, there's two access points off of Veterans Parkway, and there's a significant amount of area that's committed to green space. I want to walk you through the experience of a guest coming to the property. Basically, if you look at the master plan, there's two entrances coming off of Veterans Parkway. The first entrance you see is really what we consider more of the guest entrance. That will be where any visitor to the corporate office buildings will go primarily, that'll be their entrance point. If you look at, there's a circle next to the building, that circle is their drop area, where if someone needs to drive up for payment, that's basically their drive-through window area. And then the main corporate building is front and center on the property. The secondary entrance is past the main entrance, and that goes to field services. That will be basically the employee entrance, as well as anyone related to field services. That's the entrance they will use. We were really particular about where to put those entrances, because we wanted to maximize the distance between the edges of the property and make sure it had minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Also, we wanted to bring to your attention that the building is centered on the property, and that's because Middle Tennessee Electric's desire was to create more of a corporate campus feel. When you look to the main corporate building, they want you to look across a very nice, nicely groomed, green, pastor-like area. The blue area is a retention pond, but it'll also have a water feature in it, an aeration system that gives it a nice presence. If you look on the front, there's a walking trail that's going to be related to the staff, and they can use that, the employees can use that during lunch break, but all that is designed to set up a very pastoral, professional image from Brechen Parkway. So that is just, in essence, one of the core values we have in terms of design process. The second was making sure that we maximize the buffer area around the field service area. Field services is where a lot of the operations takes place, that's the big, wide area. That's where their trucks are stored, that's where different kinds of, the poles are stored. There's a lot of operation activity that happens with that area. That's central to the property. We felt like that was important, that we do maximize the amount of buffer around that area. It actually will have a fence around it, it'll have landscaping around it, and even using the corporate office building and the operations building to kind of buffer that as well. To service both facilities, the parking lot is what you see in the center, adjacent to the buildings, we even wanted to make sure that the parking lot itself had a nice buffer from the perimeter properties. So, in essence, they've made a commitment on this property, or desire to make a commitment on this property for the next 100 years of their vision, and we're excited about being a part of that, because they have a lot of room in order to provide the buffer that they desire, to create the corporate campus that they wanted to project, and also to have a real strong presence off of Veterans Parkway. Mr. Jones is going to spend a little time talking about the buffers specifically and our frequently asked questions, but we just wanted to walk you through the program in general, so that the community and the public would know exactly how this property's going to be developed, and it's been, again, a privilege to be a part of the process and interfacing with you all on the various dynamics of how to make it the best fit for the community and the best fit for Middle Tennessee Electric Company. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
My name is Lyle Lynch, I'm with Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects. I'm looking forward to designing the architectural buildings on this site. I'm looking forward to this since the owner has expressed a concern and a desire to construct some quality, attractive buildings on this site. The construction will be in three phases. The first phase is to construct the landscape buffer, which Mr. Roundtree will talk more about, and that will be the initial construction on the site. Phase two will be to construct three services buildings, facilities, including a vehicle maintenance shop, a warehouse, and a field services buildings. All these buildings will be one-story in height and located behind the corporate office building, screening them from Veterans Boulevard. The field service yard will be visibly screened from the surrounding neighborhoods by the maintenance shop, the warehouse, and the field services buildings. This rendering that I'm showing is of the vehicle maintenance building, and it will be typical of the three buildings forming surrounding the service yard. This design deviates from the typical industrial look created by pre-engineered metal buildings with their vertical metal siding and low-sloped metal roofs. The proposed design is an upscale structure that incorporates a variety of forms deviating from the typical gable end that you have with the industrial buildings. A variety of materials and colors provided the textures, and a portion of the exterior will be red masonry in order to relate to the residential character of this area. The corporate office building, which is the centerpiece of this site, will not be constructed for about five to 10 years. Thus, a specific design for this building has not yet been developed. The building will be up to five stories in height, and approximately 60,000 square feet on the ground floor, and 30,000 square feet on floors two through five. The multi-story design was selected to reduce the building's impact on the site, leaving as large of a buffer between this building and the surrounding properties as possible. The larger ground floor will give the building a defined base, and the primary facade will face Veterans Boulevard, and it will be defined as the public entryway. The exterior appearance will be sensitive to the surrounding residential character and will portray a positive image for MTEMC. Exterior, let's see, roof lines will be varied, and any roof-mounted equipment will be shielded from public view. Ground-mounted utility areas will be screened, and so will dumpsters and air conditioning equipment. We present this photograph of the main entrance of the existing MTEMC corporate headquarters located on Salem Pike. It was constructed in 1998, and we present this even though the new corporate headquarters, the design of it is, you know, five to 10 years away. We present this to show the quality and character of the buildings that they have constructed in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Okay, and to finish, I wanted to talk about something very important to Middle Tennessee Electric, and that is the community engagement piece. And it's important to us because it's part of who we are, it's one of the founding cooperative principles is concern for community. So as we think about our home for the next 50, 75, 100 years, and we put together this plan, we certainly want to reach out to those who we seek to be neighbors of, and gather their input, their concerns, and so forth and so on. It was mentioned a while ago that we held, not long after our workshop here recently, we held a meeting with the Homeowners Association of the Berkshire subdivision. We had a public meeting on May 27th at the Blackman Community Center to gather input, and we've held one-on-one meetings as requested from concerned citizens, and it's been our pleasure to do that. It's been a very good process, and it's allowed us to gain public input and to establish communications. As a result of that, some questions came to fore, and the ones that have been asked more often than not are the ones that are on the screen in front of you right now, and I'd like to touch on each one of those very briefly as we conclude here for our part of the presentation. First of all, it's not on here, but there will be no substations, no electrical substations or towers on this site. That was asked a few times, and we certainly don't seek to do that. That's not the intention of this property. Question number one, how many employees will be on-site? The two existing facilities right now we're seeking to consolidate have about 200 employees, so it's hard to say for sure, but over the next 10 years, we're thinking 200 to 300 employees approximately. Where's parking located? How did the number of employees impact the parking and the members coming in? As you saw from your diagram, the primary area for parking is in front of what will be the corporate complex, and to the side of the corporate complex, in front of Veterans Parkway, that's where the bulk of the parking will be. There'll be some parking in the utilitarian portion of the campus, but we're thinking 250 parking spaces will be sufficient for our needs for both our employees and for members. Next question, what kind of noise will the facility produce? And I know this is a question we've heard quite a bit, and something we pay close attention to. The noise will be, if I could characterize it as such, as institutional noise. This will be, the utilitarian part of the campus will be an institutional-type development. The primary noise will be transportation-related, pickups and deliveries, primarily vehicles, and so forth and so on. We have about, right now at our district office, in terms of our larger trucks, our diesel trucks, we have about 17 or 18. In the next 10 years, we may have as many as 20 or 25 of the larger trucks that will be on-site at this facility. The other vehicles are, for example, I drive a Pathfinder. We have a number of trucks, vans, smaller vehicles. The larger trucks, though, just about 20 or so. So certainly, we will make some noise, but what we've intended to do with the way we have worked and designed this project is to abate the noise as much as possible. Number one, as Clyde has mentioned before, we have a lot of green space to work with. This is a large tract, so we have centralized our plans and our facilities in the center of the property in order to abate the noise as much as possible. There are also buffers that are around the property, which we'll touch on more here in just a moment. Internal to the property, around the utilitarian area, we're constructing a fence, and around that fence, we are planning landscaping to cover that part of the fence as well as another buffer to noise. The way we've designed the buildings and oriented them in such a way, we've done that for the standpoint also to hold in the noise, so that's another reason we've oriented the buildings in that way. The vehicle maintenance shop is one area that folks have asked questions about as far as noise is concerned, and we're seeking to make the operation of that building, the work indoors. Now, we can't say that the doors will be closed 100% of the time, certainly, but we're seeking to make the vast majority of the operations and the maintenance done there inside. Operating hours, approximately 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekdays, is when the noise would be expected. But again, because of the mitigating factors we've taken into consideration, we feel like we've done good diligence to address those noise issues. Lighting, how much lighting would the facility have? Certainly, we'll have lights. We have submitted a photometric study to the city, and certainly the city's going to keep us on our toes with that. The lighting that we've, the plan we've developed is one where the light focus is in and down, so we think we're in a good spot from the standpoint of the concerns around lighting. When are you planning on starting? When are you planning on starting the project? With the approvals, we hope to start pretty quickly, and, and the intention is, for year one, for phase one, is to work on landscaping. That, that will be the first order of business. So, upon our hoped approval, we'll begin to work on landscaping and addressing the landscaping issues at the site. Again, this is a phased project. Phase two would be next, and phase two, what we have in mind there is building and constructing that utilitarian area we were referring to, the field services area, that would have the fence and the mitigating landscaping. That would be in years two to five, approximately. We, again, this is not, not definitive. And then after that, is when we would seek to build the corporate complex. So this is a long-term plan. Again, those are general timelines. And then finally, what type of buffer are you proposing? Now, a lot of our input has been related to this issue, and if you'll note the buffer, and those of you who've been on the property will note this, the majority of the property line has already existing significant buffer. There's significant tree population there, especially along the southern, eastern, and northeastern borders of the property. That board, that, that buffer is significant, and we plan to preserve it. All along, we've known that the buffer along the north side, where we border, we would border, the Berkshire subdivision, was the one that was most exposed, and the one we paid closest attention to. That's why we met with the Homeowners Association there, to understand as many concerns as we could. So, what we've done, in gathering that, that input from those neighbors, and working with your, with your superb city staff, we've come to a different suggestion than what we presented to you in the workshop a couple of weeks ago. So there should be an amendment, an addendum, as part of your package, that I'm going to show on the screen here next, that speaks to the buffer at the, at the Berkshire border. And if you can, if you can see, to the far left is the border, the property line of Berkshire. Now, it's represented there with, represented there with a tree, but it, the, the, the border area of Berkshire varies from property to property. There's some significant buffer at some areas, and then it's fairly clear at others. But nevertheless, starting with the far left there would be the property line for Berkshire. What we seek to do is to move off of that border 30 feet, and then that 30 feet will be a landscape or a preservation easement, so we're setting that aside. After that 30 feet, as part of our phase one landscaping, we'll be seeking to plant evergreen trees along that existing border of the existing Berkshire homes. And we will plant those, those trees and allow them to mature. At some point, we will be seeking to come back in phase two, not, not phase one, but phase two, sometime within that, to construct a fence to further demarcate the border, and to secure the property, both from the perspective of both parties. So, but we'll be planting, we'll be erecting the fence at such a time as when the evergreens are filled in enough to where it won't be visible, there, certainly the intention will be, it won't be visible to the Berkshire residents. So that is the essence of our plan. We have a picture, now this is actually a picture along the border of Stratford Hall subdivision in, in Murfreesboro, and there is actually a black vinyl fence behind this, this hedge work. Now, we're planning to plant evergreen tree, evergreen trees, and not shrubs, these are shrubs, but nevertheless, something akin to this, and certainly seeking to mitigate the visual, is what we'll seek to do with that, with that buffer. Now, this buffer is one that, we know, we don't make 100% of the people 100% happy, but what we try to do is mitigate as many concerns as we can. We feel like it's a balanced approach, and we feel like this is the way to go, certainly one that we can clearly communicate to you tonight. So, I'll close with saying, and not just saying, but pledging, that Middleton City Electric seeks to be a good neighbor. I mean, this is where we want to make our home for the next many decades, and, and again, community, community engagement, concern for community, very important to us, so we'll make that pledge to you tonight. And I know that we have a public hearing coming, and I'll sit down and be happy to answer any questions I can, and help in, help in this process in any way that I can. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions for Mr. Jones, or Mr. Lynch, or anybody from members of the planning commission? Okay. If there's no questions, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody in the audience that I'd like to come forward to speak, either for or against this proposal, to please come forward at this time.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Stephen McPherson. I live at 434 Creekview Drive. I am the president of the Homeowners Association of Cedar Creek. We do, we live on the, I would say, the east side and the center of the proposed opportunity on the other side of the creek. So a few, few of our homeowners received a notice. All I ask is that we are kept abreast of what's going on, if there's any changes, that the council takes into consideration the homeowners on the other side, and that we appreciate that opportunity, just to be able to speak, and do look forward to a solid good partnership in this, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Anybody else?
My name's Jeff Rainwater, 1030 Brinkley Run, Murfreesboro. I live across the creek, about a quarter of a mile or so, not far across Brinkley from this site. And my major concern about this site is, is what is it opening up for the Blackman community, kind of as a whole, because this is a complete differentiation from where we've gone in the past, and, and where even the Blackman Land and Use Study has, has discussed and talked about. This, this area here was originally designed for some type of institutional type use, which I agree that the corporate office would, would fall under that, with a couple hundred employees and some things like that. I'm not sure a service yard on an industrial-type operation is necessarily appropriate to put right in the center of Blackman, which is about where this is, surrounded completely by residential areas. You know, some things that come to mind, I know, I said like several questions, there's no way I'll cover all of them, because y'all know I write a little more than I should sometimes. Anyway, the noise thing comes to mind right off the bat, about in, in the, in the general area. My father worked in a building about like that, turning a wrench on diesel trucks for his entire career. That's very loud, I can attest to you. The doors will not be shut. They may say that that's your policy, but I also know what it's like when it's 90 degrees in that shop, that door will not be down. The other part of it is, you know, according to Keith Thomason, their VP of Operations, that there will be mechanic operations going on until 11:00 PM at night, some nights, because they won't be working on all these trucks till they come back in from the day. So I don't know if everybody knows that, and that's something that really hasn't come out in everything that they're saying, so I think that's one thing that definitely needs to be addressed. So, you know, this is kind of a differentiation from that, the noise, you know, coming across, you know, I guess my question is, if you allow this, what's next? You know, if you continue to allow the, the highest, heaviest end of commercial. When we talked about apartments and things like that, in, in this area over by, around where I live, it was always said, well, you need a transitional type zoning. Well, there is no transitional type zoning. You got an open field of a couple hundred feet, a few hundred feet there, and that's about how far I live from Blackman High School, and I hear their bell ringing on days when I'm, when I'm actually at home or not at work or something. So you can think, you know, noise travels. You know, think about a football, a football stadium cheering, think about a diesel truck running. You can get similar decibels out of those types of things. Ball game, probably a little, little higher, but, you know, so that, that concerns me. I'm not too concerned about traffic, because 840 and veterans should be able to handle anything they throw at it. There's still a lot of truck traffic in the area, of course, there's a quarry. You know, my, my main, a big question is, you know, why try to shove this in the middle of that, when you have land that's more appropriate for it around the community, even around, even like a mile down the road? Land for sale, sitting there, that was in the Blackman Land Use Study as more wholesale, or a more warehouse-type district around the exits and along 840, is kind of how that was planned out. So, you know, why not look at that? And, other than that, it kind of changes. One thing I want to bring up also is the, and this is, I'll end with this, is the Blackman Land Use Study had a road going right through the middle of this property. The major thoroughfare plan does not. What, what, I don't, I don't know what happened there. There is no connector through this area between Brinkley and Veterans Parkway, so there's no way to really go from Fortress, which is your five-lane highway, to Veterans Parkway, without going all the way around the circle, kind of thing. I know that was originally planned for this. I don't know what happened there, as far as where that went. Is that still in the plans, or is that not, not in the plans? I'd like to kind of know the, the answer to that. So, other than that, that's pretty much all my questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rainwater. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb, rest of the planning commission, good evening. I'm Steve Sacks. I live at 5239 St. Ives Drive in Berkshire subdivision. I'm, I'm actually in the geographical center of the subdivision, so I'm here to speak for all the neighbors in the subdivision. I'm honored by that. We have a great subdivision. We have now about 600 homes. When I moved there, there were about 350 homes. I have worried, and worried for years, that this might become a thousand-home subdivision someday. This project helps reach the conclusion, I think, of our subdivision, gives us a chance to get to about 700, 750 homes. And so I think this is a good project. I think it changes the texture a little bit of veterans, opens up a little commercial, but I don't see this as high-density commercial. I think this is very complimentary to what we'd like to have on our side of town, so I'm here to speak in favor of it. I hope you'll vote in favor of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Anybody else?
Pleasure to be here. Tim Worley, I'm at 5345 Sherrington Road, that's in Berkshire, so my property is directly adjacent to the annexation, and I just have a couple of concerns. One is noise. I will actually absolutely see the field service yard, and then the buffer between that is shown in the amendment that I see, has the fence, has a wire-woven fence, which is significantly less desirable than what we use in Berkshire, in our covenants and our restrictions. So, and it, it shows, and I may misunderstand it, but it shows on, exactly on the property line, so I'm, I'm a little confused about how it's going to be not visible. So those are my concerns, noise, and a better understanding of the buffer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Worley.
Mr. Worley, before you depart, I would like to give you an illustration.
Yep.
The planning commission members have it, and you, you've got an outdated one, I think.
Thank you. I'll answer, I'll answer your question about the fence, and you see it on there, please. Anybody else?
My name's Mark Nagorski. I live at 5703 Colchester Court. I'll live directly behind the proposed project, and I'll voice a very similar concern, and that was, and I was able to bring it up to Mr. Jones at the recent meeting we had at the Blackman Community Center, and that is, the noise that will be coming from the diesel engines and the maintenance department, and then also, our concern is the visibility factor between us that live on that fence line, the buffer area. We heard that some of the residents were open to the idea of opening that up with not that many trees, and being able to see the facility. There are others that were, like myself, I don't want to really see it. I don't mind it being there. I'm concerned about noise, but as far as the project itself, I'm not against it, I just don't really want to see it. And being in the real estate business, I'm concerned for our property values. I think this is going to be a good addition to the area, but again, I can see it hurting the area when it gets to the point of visibility and sound. So my main concern is to make sure that we, as individual homeowners, and especially these two streets, for those that are familiar with Berkshire, are the most expensive streets in Berkshire. They're the Highlands, and it has the highest property values. We don't want to see a depreciation of, especially these two streets are going to be affected, which is Sherrington and Colchester Court. So what I would ask is that there be a consideration to the thought of, if individual homeowners want less green area, less trees, accommodate those, but for those of us that would like more trees, the highest, please accommodate us on that, and do the very best plan, layout for sound. If that's, you know, a, a sound barrier, a higher trees, closer to those maintenance areas, put a lot of thought into that. That's what we're asking of, of Mr. Jones and the, and the company there. So I appreciate hearing out of that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I am Mary Amidi. I live at 1137 Timber Creek Drive. I am the president of the Berkshire HOA. Just wanted to come in and say, they've been very, very kind to meet with us and answer any questions we've had. Not at all against the project. Just want to confirm a few things. We were assured that there would be no communication towers on this property, and no inlets into our neighborhood, and we want to make sure those two things definitely stand. One question that's come across loud and clear from the neighborhood in most recent days that I haven't had a chance to present to Mr. Jones or anyone else with MT-EMC is fuel. Is there going to be fuel on site? Are they going to be storing fuel for their different automobiles and things that they have? And if so, what are the precautionary measures being taken there? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Scott Dye, and I live at 411 Creekview Drive, on the east side, across overall creek, and in general, my main concern with this would be the noise. Being honest, I've, I've gone back and forth with what I personally feel of this, and overall, I'm kind of in favor of this. The one area that kind of is a concern, and it wasn't even brought up here, which is why I would like to mention it, is, is the phase four of the plan. Right now, they have for renewable energy sources for research and development. My concern is, is really, it's just a dotted line on the plan, and once this were to get approved, it could become a lot of things. So, the way everything's planned out, on the surface of all this, I, other than there being a lot of extra noise, I'm a little more concerned hearing about noise until 11:00 o'clock, when I was thinking it was within business hours, and from, I've actually been by their current facility, and it's not very loud, from what I was considering, but going on into the night is a little more of a concern, just being honest. That, and this phase four, since they really aren't exactly sure what they're going to do with it right now, 10, 15 years from now, it could change, and we wouldn't necessarily be knowing what that could be. That's, I think that should be balanced in with this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Dye. Anybody else? Seeing if anybody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ailott, I think you might be able to address some of the questions, and you might need Mr. Jones to come back up and...
Well, some of the things we heard, I think he needs to, but let me start on some of the things that I heard, and, and address them. First of all, something I didn't hear, but something that does help to address some of the questions, is what, what about the future, and what about change? And when an applicant tells me they're fixing to make a 100-year commitment to a piece of property, I know good and well there's going to be change. During my lifetime, during my tenure here, I've seen so much change that I know it's inevitable. That's just the nature of landies. One of the attractive things about this plan is that Middleton City Electric has come forward as a planned commercial development, and what that is, is doing is... stop there from being the possibility that there will need to be change and that some of the change will actually be good and very appropriate. But what it does do, it does require that to amend the plan, they go back to the same process by which it was adopted. Public hearing with the planning commission. Study by the planning commission, recommendation to the council, the council adopting ordinance. If you watch our planning commission meetings, you see that we go through a lot of these amendments. And, but we invite the public. We don't short the process. We go through the process and we invite the people who were originally involved, the new neighbors, whoever they may be, to participate in that process again. So, Mr. Dye, in hearing your concerns, and we spoke about them the other night, what stops there from being change? Well, I can't stop there from being a need for change or a desire for change, but I can make sure that they go through a process for change that invites you to the table, to invite you to the process, to invite you to this podium, to speak to this group as they deliberate whether or not to allow the change. And that, I can pledge to you, as long as this own commercial plan, planned commercial development, will be done. And what I have counseled the applicants, they're becoming married to a process, not just to a plan, but to a process. And in the future, as the inevitable needs for change is come, or if they embark upon something that's inconsistent with his plan, they'll have to go back through this amendment process. So, I think that's probably one of the most important messages I want people to understand. We haven't talked about that a whole lot tonight, but that's what planned commercial development means. Now, Mr. Rainwater asked a very, very, very good question about the street connectivity. What about the street that was shown on the Blackman Land use plan to go right through this property and to connect with Blaze Drive? Well, this plan does not have that street. And that street cannot, at this point in time, be constructed according to the Blackman plan because the villages of Berkshire are directly in the way of it. One of the things we discovered after that line on the Blackman Land use map was created was that the creek crosses and the bridge and the floodway create a bad dynamic to be able to create a street there. And the only way to have done it would have been have a long skewed bridge crossing the floodway of overall creek in a manner that would be very costly and would be very difficult. And as a planning body, we opted not to do that. But we looked at other alternatives as a possibility. And one of those, in fact, is the Pennington Drive in Berkshire that connects through the traffic circle and then through St. Ives back to Brinkley Road. So, that does allow for connectivity. It doesn't build it as a collector's street, but it does allow for that east-west connectivity without going through. Now, the next question would be, what about these other streets? For instance, the Starnes Drive in the villages of Berkshire. What about the street in the cloister subdivision that were stubbed, that would ultimately have connected together? Also, the street in, I guess that would be the enclave in the Berkshire subdivision. Well, to answer that, and I guess I've already answered that to the HOA because they asked me that very question, what about those streets? They wanted me to know that they were against those connections. They didn't want to see them happen, but where did I stand on? And my answer is, it is very good plan to see that kind of connectivity. And were this being developed as residential? Absolutely. I would expect it to be done. But sometimes, when in planning, one good idea excludes the ability to implement another good idea. So, if we want to see this use, we won't see those streets connected. Is this a better idea than seeing those streets connected? And that's something that the planning commission needs to decide. This plan keeps that from happening. It's not the end of the world. Guarantee you, were this another 300 households, I would be insisting to see those streets connected. As this use, well, it's not as important. So, Mr. Rainwater, that's part of my explanation to you. And I want the planning commission to have to, when they make this recommendation to council, that's a point that they should be studying upon and reflecting on in their minds. Mr. Worley, I think I've given you an answer to your question about the woven wire. There is no woven wire on this. What they're proposing to do, for everybody that didn't get the illustration, you may have noticed it on the graphic that Mr. Jones showed, but the row of trees 30 foot off the property line will, evergreen trees are expected to grow by year five. They're supposed to be, it looks like about 10 feet tall. Sometime after it being planted, the trees will be big enough that they can hide the black-coated chain-link fence. Not a stock fence, not a woven wire farm fence, but a black chain-link fence. And that's what Milton County Electric has committed to do. And they want to build it after the evergreen trees begin to get big enough to obscure it from view. So, it will be, there may be some stealth there so it doesn't obstruct and become ugly. The gentleman who spoke about the, give the trees for some, but not for all, I guess that was my comment when I was making my notes. What, since Milton County Electric has been engaging me in this discussion, I've had a lot of discussion about this buffer. In fact, it's been something that has occupied my attention probably as much as anything else on this plan. And I notice this interface is difficult to work out where one size fits all perfectly. It would be wonderful if everybody wanted the very same thing, but that's not the way life is and that's not the way people are. So, what Milton County Electric is looking to do, and I really want you to obtain a copy of this buffer, I think we'll be able to make it available to you. But they are proposing a landscape preservation easement 30 foot wide from the property line to that row of trees I was just talking about. And in that preservation area, I think Milton County Electric will let those who wants to cut the vegetation and the trees, just go at it. Take your weed eater out there and whack it down. It's up to you. But those who want to keep it, you'll have the ability to keep it intact. Milton County Electric will be proud for you to maintain it the way it is. And Mr. Jones, I think I would want you to validate, that maybe offer some additional explanation on that point. Because what they're trying to do is to figure out a way that some can have what they want and if the next-door neighbor wants something different, he can have that too. But what Milton County Electric needs, they need to have the ability to fence their property and secure it, maintain it and operate it safely and exclude people who don't need to be on their site at the price they don't need to be. And that's really what they're trying to do with the black chain-link fence and the buffer they're going to create. And they're also trying to put something that will obscure and create a proper backdrop to the site. And for those of you all who live on Colchester and Sherrington, I've walked up and down that fence road the other night and enjoyed it a whole lot. I saw it, but I know it's going to change with this. And I really, I really think this is a good buffer plan. I think what they're laying out is something that will address everybody down through there in a way that they can have a little bit of control over their destiny. The issue of towers, we know there's no towers, but I don't know about fuel on the site. I think Mr. Jones needs to come up and answer that question. And I think Mr. Jones also needs to come up and answer the question about the renewable energy area. That's something that, when I look into the future, I think of short-term, midterm and long-term. Short-term, I know where I'm going to be in the morning if everything goes right and I'm going to be in my office and I'm going to be working. So, that's short-term. Midterm, well, Friday, I expect to be getting off work and starting my weekend. But I'm not sure where I'm going to be in three years. So, the renewable energy is sort of a long-term thing. And I think Mr. Jones needs to have described that. But the one thing I can tell you is, when he goes inconsistent with this plan or has desires to be inconsistent with the plan he's showing us tonight, or that is ultimately adopted by the council, we're going to go back through this process to sort it out if there's going to be any changes to that area. And I'd invite Mr. Jones up now to answer those questions.
Mr. Jones, we know you probably don't have all the answers to everything. We can look at things at site plan, you know, in more detail, of course, but the other things, and I'm sure you made a note of it, were several questions about noise and if you have any ideas about how to mitigate the noise and the hours that some of the neighbors might be experiencing on that. I noticed on our map here, the vehicle maintenance building was on the south side of your site there, the furthest side away from Berkshire. And it's a pretty good distance from the two subdivisions, Cloisters and Berkshire. I wondered if there was anything you could do to the area around the vehicle maintenance building, if that was going to be a source of potential noise.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll be happy to do my best to address those questions and if I miss one, please ask me. But we'll start with the hours and the issue of noise. And as I mentioned before, we've attempted to do a number of things from the start with the notion in mind that we're going to make some noise and what can we do to mitigate? And where we positioned the vehicle shop that you just alluded to, Mr. Chairman, that's one reason we put it there. Now, what we're going to seek to do is to make that building an air-conditioned building where we can, again, have the doors closed most of the time to help mitigate noise. As far as the working hours, one advantage of consolidating our operations and having more people centralized is we can focus better to get work done. Mr. Roundtree mentioned Keith Thomason and he works his folks late, you know, he just, he works until 11:00 right now. We have one person, basically, that does vehicle maintenance until about 11:00. We can mitigate that. We can address that issue. The primary, the primary working hours are going to be 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And that's when, that's when the majority of, if you will, the noise we will make would occur. We're happy to look at our operational hours as they stand now, which is 11:00, to rein that in and mitigate that. There was a mention, let's see, of, let's start with fuel onsite. We do have fuel onsite right now at our district offices and our corporate, at our existing corporate office. We do not have plans to have fuel onsite at this campus facility. We're actually trying to get away from that in our existing facilities right now. So, there will be no fuel for pumping onsite. A question about towers and, you know, no towers, again, no towers planned for the site. Phase Four, and if we don't do a solar field, we're not going to do windmills or anything like that. It's either going to be a solar field or we're coming back to this commission. And again, that's a long-term plan, but we sort of drew a dotted line around that to say, we want to research the possibility of a solar generation field to produce, to generate solar power. But that's research, that's long-term. If it's anything other than that, we'll be coming back to this commission. And one thing to emphasize, I know there was some inconsistency, Scott, you pointed out one time on the plan, we're going to preserve all that tree line. We're not going to touch the trees back there. Case-by-case requests. And Joseph, I think you answered that well, but if we need to plant some extra trees, let's talk about that. We're happy to talk with our neighbors to see how we can, see what we can do. And I'll emphasize that, I meant to do that start as I got up, to say that I would invite anyone with concerns or questions to engage with us and let's talk through and we'll do our utmost to answer questions and to mitigate concerns if we, if it's at all possible. Anything else that I missed?
While you're there, Mr. Jones, let me ask members of the planning commission, do you have any questions for me?
I do. I think you all have done a good job specifically talking about the buffer. Mr. Ailott, though, we talk, when we usually are at site plan, we talk about an A, B or C type buffer. So, we're, since this is a planned commercial development, we are accepting the buffer that's being proposed. Are we then saying, or will we dictate how many trees or how many feet these trees will have to be next to each other? Or how do we, how do we control or monitor with respects to the number of trees that would be going on the other side of this fence?
I think you actually raised a good point and I think it's a detail that we still need to probably sort out just a little bit. What we've been trying to work out, something that, a buffer program that basically has an acceptance from the affected property owner, with the realization that there may be a couple of details that really need to be finished in terms of spacing. For one thing, the species. Is it going to be one species or going to be a variety of species? So, I think the spacing part is something Mr. Roundtree is prepared to get to next, but he's been, he's been working right up to the clock. Now, part of what I want to tell you is that the existing tree row along the south adjacent to the cloister, the existing trees in the back backing up to the creek, the existing trees in the tree row backing up to the villages of Berkshire that is yet to be developed, that would meet or exceed our expectations for a type E buffer. Those are impenetrable forests. And unless someone got in there and did some severe whacking, they would remain that way. And I think the expectation of Milton County Electric and the commitment is to leave those intact. And in fact, I suggested to them a couple of places where people from the cloister, it looked like they were invading the property, coming in, maybe casual use, that once it was secured, it will stop people from trampling the path through there and it will, it will become that impenetrable barrier they're going to need. The area that had been most, I guess, in need of buffering is the park backing up to the Colchester and Sherrington Road area. And that's where this buffer would be applied. All of the 25 houses and 25 lots that back up to the property. This is very close, the width exceeds a type E. We would have only expected a type C buffer in this type of situation, which would be 12-foot. This is 30-foot. So, combining with the Evergrow, Evergreen, they're getting pretty close to the, what we would expect for a type C. The real outstanding issue is, what is the spacing, what is the species? I can tell you in my conversation with Mr. Jones and Mr. Roundtree, the expectation is that the trees will grow together so you don't see through them. And in fact, the example that they showed behind Stratford Hall is exactly that. Mr. Drew?
Let me follow up with one question. Thank you. I just want everybody to have some assurance as to what we're talking about. Then the second question is, we're talking about a, I don't know if we're going to call it a buffer, but we'll call it landscaping around the utilitarian area that we're speaking of, where the shop area and vehicle maintenance will be. At what point, since this is a planned commercial development, at what point will we see what that landscaping will look like?
Two things. I think, I think right now they're still showing it to us in concept.
Right.
And part of what we may want to do is to ask that before the matter gets to the city council for public hearing, that we have something that we've validated. And what I can, if the planning commission were to recommend approval tonight, before, we'll have another chance to meet, maybe to get that more finalized as a supplemental recommendation before the council's public hearing, if that would make sense to Mr. Gill and Mr. Young.
Normally, we would review the detailed landscaping plans at the site plan approval process.
Yes, that's the next part. But what I want to know is a little bit more about...
What your intentions are with that.
Right. Just to get it down, so we, maybe a little bit more than we got tonight, a little bit less conceptual, but a little bit more, but not the site plan stage where we would review very carefully in urban environmental, we'd be looking at species and colors and calipers and all that.
Yeah. I got it. The question pertaining to connectivity to Berkshire and perhaps the cloisters, Mr. Ailott kind of put it on the planning commission, if we would want those connections made. I don't know that I'd be going to an extreme if I said I cannot see the planning commission driving any benefits for public health and safety by requiring those connections to be made. But he made the good point that if it was any type of residential development, even a multifamily development, we would be looking strongly at connectivity because of service vehicles and emergency vehicles getting into areas in case of a natural emergency. So, in a case like this, they don't, there won't be anybody residing on this property that we would need to worry about getting... I don't know that I'd be going to an extreme if I said, I cannot see the planning commission driving any benefits for public health and safety by requiring those connections to be made. But he made the good point that if it was any type of residential development, even a multifamily development, we would be looking strongly at connectivity because of service vehicles and emergency vehicles getting into areas in case of a natural emergency. So in a case like this, they don't, there won't be anybody residing on this property that we would need to worry about getting emergency vehicles to. So I can't see the planning commission determining anything about connectivity being required.
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Young?
I have two comments. I think the Mr. Halliburton's comment about a little beefed-up area around your utility yard to put in an additional buffer, because then you'll have two buffers in. And also, I would challenge your architect, Mr. Lynch, who has designed many beautiful buildings in this community, to use his talents to see if he couldn't do a little buffering on that vehicle maintenance building itself, with some sound baffles or things like that that might cut that noise out before it ever reaches the outside.
Any other questions? Ms. Jones?
Just clarification, going back to the phase four, the renewable energy area, and Mr. Jones talked about the potentially having the solar panels in that area. Since that would be something very new and different for us, still, if they got ready to make that area, or start installing solar panels, would that not also kind of be like a site plan, and they would still bring it back and we would approve it? Or do they just get to start installing solar panels in there someday?
No, they'd have the opportunity to bring it back before the planning commission for site plan review.
Okay.
We would want to, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This looks like an outstanding project, and I do appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with the surrounding neighborhoods and trying to answer and handle some of the problems and concerns that obviously the neighbors would have, and I think you guys have done a good job of that. If there's no other questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion, but let me make a comment before I make the motion. I think we need to really give Middle Tennessee Electric membership an outstanding job of working with our community. They bent over backwards to work with our community, they didn't have to, they did. I think sometimes you have to realize, we could have had three or four hundred homes right behind our homes, our houses, and there's nothing that we could have done about, done about it. And Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation, they took advantage of the opportunity to work with our neighborhood. So I make the motion that we approve this subject to all staff comments based on the landscaping and buffering.
I'll second his motion.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item C is annexation petition for approximately six point six acres along Veterans Parkway. Mrs. Judy Robinson, executor as the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our third public hearing this evening is for you to consider annexation of property that's located south of Old Salem Road. The property is approximately six point six acres, and it includes right-of-way along Veterans Parkway. You can see the property is located along the northeast side of Veterans Parkway and south of Old Salem Road. The subject area does include approximately seven hundred and thirty-nine linear feet of Veterans Parkway right-of-way, and it's identified in the orange color on the map that you have for you. The property for which annexation has been requested is identified in the blue color on the screen. The property is contiguous with current city limits along the southern property line. You see the area shaded yellow with a green border. That indicates the area is currently located within Murfreesboro city limits. And as we've previously mentioned, property must be contiguous with the city for us to annex it. Property is also located within Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary. What may not be apparent to your eyes with this map is that there's actually a gap on the northern side. The property does not touch or is not contiguous with current city limits along the northern property line. There's a four point one eight foot gap between the existing city limits, and let me go to a map that shows you that a little bit more clearer. So the third map that you have in your material shows a four point one eight foot gap between the requested area and city limits along Old Salem Highway and the closed Windrow Road. You have been provided with a plan of services which outlines the services the city can provide, provides a timeframe for when we can provide them. Here's a companion zoning change request, which will be the subject of the next public hearing. However, this public hearing is for you to consider this annexation of the property. It was requested by the property owner, Ms. Judy Robinson, that this property be annexed, and the right-of-way was included as additional study area. If you have any questions, staff would be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. However, you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to city council.
Okay. Any questions of Mrs. Green? Is there an applicant that would like to make any statements before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Bratcher is present this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bratcher. There's no comments for that. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing nobody come, I'll close the public hearing. If there's any questions, it's a good time to answer them, ask them. Other than that, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item D is a zoning application for approximately four point three acres along Veterans Parkway to be zoned commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. Mrs. Judy Robinson, executor as the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our next public hearing, as I alluded to in the previous item, is a companion zoning change request, which corresponds with the previous annexation request, for which you just recommended annexation to city council. The requested area is identified in blue on the map before you, and it is four point three acres, and it's located along Veterans Parkway, along the northeast side of Veterans Parkway, and south of Old Salem Road. You can see the current city limits are contiguous with the property to the south, and the properties to the south are zone CH, and that's Commercial Highway District. And the properties to the north, just past the gap, and is property zone PUD, and that's Planned Unit District. And those are actually a part of the Merrimott Springs Plan Development. As a matter of fact, this is a part of the high-density multifamily commercial portion of the PUD, which was approved several years ago. We haven't seen, of course, construction of that yet. You've only seen the construction of the single-family detached, detached portions of the planned development. But in the future, we will expect to see some high-density residential and commercial development along Veterans Parkway, which of course is a major arterial in our community, and a newly-built street. With the construction of Veterans Parkway, that did open up some opportunities for potential development in the future. And as such, the property owners have asked that you zone this property CH simultaneous with the annexation. Our CH district stands for Commercial Highway District, and it's for a commercial-type zoning that we would typically see along major arterials in the city of Murfreesboro. Veterans Parkway is not a highway, however, it is a major arterial, much like our South Church Street, Memorial Boulevard, Old Fort Parkway, located within Murfreesboro. In this area, there, on the, the areas that are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County are mostly zoned for residential purposes, residential agricultural purposes. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the zoning change of CH simultaneous with the annexation. If you have questions from staff, we'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions? Not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Yes, too good.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, planning commission members and staff. I'm Chris Bratcher, 522 Uptown Square. I'm a commercial estate broker at Red Realty. I'm here tonight representing Mrs. Robinson, the executor and the heirs of the property. They are asking for this property to be rezoned to Commercial Highway. As you know, in your ultimate wisdom and vision, the long-term planning, you built the Veterans Parkway, and as you saw prior to this public hearing, that I think Veterans Parkway is poised for a lot of development in the future, along with the, I think the Murfreesboro City Schools is building off of Veterans Parkway, and now the Middle Tennessee Electric. So we feel like this is an appropriate zone, it's contiguous with existing commercial highway zoning. There's an old farmhouse that resides on the corner of Old Salem and Veterans Parkway that's, no one lives in, probably built in the fifties. Has a lot of road advantage on Veterans Parkway, and we feel like the best and highest use would be Commercial Highway. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bratcher.
Thank you.
Would anybody else care to speak? Excuse me. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any questions?
Ms. Green, this is an appropriate zone for this corner lot.
It would be.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And the final public hearing is a PRD amendment for approximately eighteen point six six acres north of Franklin Road, Old Fort Parkway, in the Hampton Park at Hillwood PUD. Mr. David Alcorn, on behalf of Salem Creek Partnership, is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next and final public hearing for this evening is for you to consider amending the existing PUD Planned Unit District Zone located for property that's a part of the Hillwood PUD Plan Development. The property is identified in orange before you, and you see the portion of property for which the change is being requested. Subject property is located north of Old Fort Parkway, Highway 96, or Franklin Road, depending on what section of this highway you're located on, and it's known as the Hampton Park at Hillwood Plan Development. Property was formally approved as a part of the townhomes or condominium or residential attached development of the original planned development at Hillwood in 2007. It was later amended in 2010. However, last year, the city approved an amendment to the Planned Unit District to allow this area to be developed with a more standard subdivision of single-family detached dwellings, as opposed to the single-family attached dwellings which were approved previously. And changing the zoning also resulted in a dramatic reduction in the number of units that was expected to be created from the development of this property. The developer is now in the process of developing the subdivision, and has discovered that due to a large part, to the existing easements that cross the property, that he would like to reduce the required front, side, and rear setbacks, as indicated in the letter. Now I'm going to scroll over to the letter at this point. You can see a letter from Mr. Taylor, who is in the audience this evening, a summary of the setback changes that they're proposing, and there is a chart in the middle that shows that the front setback is currently thirty-five feet, and they'd like to reduce that to thirty feet. The side setbacks, with the side that's not on a street, so a traditional lot has a front and two neighbors and a rear, would keep the same five-foot setback. The rear setback, they're asking to cut that in half from twenty feet to ten feet. And then the side for lots that are on a corner, corner lots, would have the traditional thirty-foot front, but then they're asking for them, instead of having a thirty-five-foot side, the secondary side, to have a twenty-foot side setback. So the changes correspond with the front, the sides, the fronts, the rear, and the sides for properties that are on a corner lot. And if you have questions about that letter, Mr. Taylor would like to answer them for you, although he did not prepare a presentation this evening. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding this PUD amendment. Staff will be available for any questions you may have, either before or after the public hearing.
Ms. Green, are there any homes built on this eighteen point six acres yet?
No. They're still building the streets, installing the infrastructure.
So it's not going to affect any of the homes?
Not within the area that's orange. That's right.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Green? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Mr. Taylor, you don't even want to speak?
Hmm. It's scheduled.
No. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
He's not familiar with the Matt Murphy route.
Any questions from members of the planning commission? Now we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, Chairman.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. I think it also concludes my voice. Staff reports, Mr. Adelot, your favorite portion of the agenda.
I will offer my usual admonishments about training. That's it.
Well, that's good. It's a little early to get worried too much about training, because we've got plenty of time left, but I know we've got another session coming up Monday, I believe.
Yeah, there is something scheduled for this coming Monday.
Yes, sir. Okay.
What to do with vacant lots.
All right. Yes. If there's no further business coming for us tonight, I'll close this meeting, and thank you for your time. Stay on adjournment.